Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a clarification to Ma'am Jean. Ma'am, na-menshoni mo nga duha gyud ang ipadala?
Ah, sa usual gyud namu sa Dance Sport, sir, duham, ah, Your Honor, duham ang gyud kakapal.
Each category?
Yes.
So Dance Sport?
As has been practiced in the lower meet, in the division and up to provincial level. But in the Palaro, nakasabot na gina ang parents nga if two couples only the grade A will ah, can represent in the Palarong Pambansa. Although, gihimo mangguna namo, kahit kanabang to provide food, canang opportunity for those aspiring mga dancers, nga maka-experience po sila competition even up to provincial level. Although, klaro na gyud na daan nga, ang first place is considered to dance in the grade A. And the second, the silver is, they will dance in the grade E. But only the winner in the grade A will canang ah, go to the Palarong Pambansa. Mauna nga, canang kami pod, sa our and as coach, among mga tournament manager and our director is, kanabang, as much as possible, if two couples manggani ang ipadala din, at least ang Usamis, wala'y ma-miss nga opportunity. Kay isara manggud ang couple gyud nga nakaya sa OCCS. The rest manggud, we have a lot of dancers pero solo, wala'y paris. Solo ra gyud, daghan.
Yes, ma'am. You have a follow-up question?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is a practice, ma'am, from the division or the other division, na technically same in each category, in each district, duha gyud ang ipadala per, per category.
Kapag start mangusa Dance Sport, kay only OCCS ra gyud na ay mga representatives. Karunan na gyud nga, school year nga tulun na ang ning participant. So usually OCCS ra gyud na ang representative. Then, the first time naning join me, ano, two couples na, we have two couples in Latin and two couples in the standard. So, kanyang two couples, ah, nagcompete sila sa district, identified na si first and the second. Pag-abot sa division, mag-compete gehapon na sila, kay two couples na manggud, and two couples manggud po ipadala sa higher meet.
Yes, ma'am. And, sa karun nga matter, ma'am, ipadalag appeal ang transferring students?
Um, it is not for me to say it, Your Honor, kay, canang wala pa ma po'y official gyud pod me nga na.
No, 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 I mean, ma'am, kay kung wala na brok up sa sanggunean, of course, wala pod may idea, and mag-start na manggud pod ang kining ato ang contest. So, kung may gani, ato pasalamatan pod si SDS o si SDS, kay aptik ang ilahang response dayon nga mahold sa at, as of this moment. My point, ma'am, is, kung wala na brok up, kay nag-start naman, October 7 ang opening, mapadala baggyud sila padayon or delay?
Mapadala sila if, based on the memo of the division.
Of the division. So, pag identify, ma'am, sa first or second, nawala man ming agi ang duha ka-transferi sa district meet?
Pag-abot manggud sa kuwan, sir, sa division level is, morag ma-consider back to zero sila, kay, actually karun, sa other schools, na ay four couples, four Latin to represent Maximino Laurete, four couples of Latin. Ang sa OCCS, only one, and then maputang nga maplas ng usa.
Yes, ma'am. Ang sa Maximino, ma'am, ming agig district meet ang four couples?
Yes.
Ming agi, so malahe ang central. If ever malahe ang central, wala'y agig district meet?
Ah, district meet mahibutang yapos ang district meet.
Manaman ang district meet, last August 8 pa man, sa district to, mga imutang at delay gyud maka-agi.
Kay, based on the, kanyang understanding lam pod on the guideline, ah, I think si sir, kuwan siguro, no, si sir Tony ang maka-best.
Ah, si.
Explain ano, sir, kay ang Akuar ra gyud is, un saragid pod, ang akong na-receive nga instruction or information from authority higher sa Akuar.
Okay, okay, ma'am. Ato nakita nga, August 8, ang iyong district meet, yumanan, na tingalang ano nga, talaga kusitan nga mo gula. So, please explain, sir, ah, the coordinator sa sports, ah, Sir Magrano?
Thank you so much, Your Honor, Mr. Chair, and mayong hapon sa tanan, and to this August 20. Now, allow me to read my piece, ah, that started everything. On or about September 25, the Assistant Tournament Director for Dance Sport, Mr. John Paul Simbahan approached me to inquire whether a learner from Isami Subsidental Division could still transfer to another school. I responded affirmatively, explaining that it is against DEEPED policy to deny transferies. Mr. Simbahan then mentioned that the learner in question, ah, the learner that's coming from, who is coming from Jimenez, is skilled in Dance Sport, and asked if it would be possible for the learner to compete in the division meet. He further stated that the learner had already participated in both the school and district meets, but did not win during the Isami Subsidental Division meet. Relying on the provisions of DEEPED Order Number 20 Series 2024, I informed him that there was no restriction preventing the learner from competing. Last Monday, barangay captain, ah, Honorable Salik Calahat, they come, ah, they talked with Ms. Arlin Villa, while I was present to raise the concern regarding this matter. I explained that based on existing DEEPED guidelines, I cannot deny the transfer of the learner, since it would be contrary to DEEPED, and of course, from competing to DEEPED Sports Policy, since we have guidelines that we need to follow. As long as the learner meets all eligibility requirements, and that requirement tells us that the athlete plays the lower meets, later on, ah, I may ask for, um, may ask your permission to, of course, ah, state all as well the, ah, DEEPED guidelines regarding ah, eligibility of the athlete. He or she is allowed to participate in the competition. Your Honor, may I ask your permission that I would be, ah, presenting the guidelines of the eligibility of athletes, if I may?
Please, sir, please.
Thank you. Okay, section five. Ah, of the DEEPED Order 20 Series 2024, the rules on participation in the Palarong Pambansa. Ah, Your Honor, the Palarong Pambansa is our guideline in, ah, having the competition all throughout the regional, ah, regional, district, and school meet. Ah, since in our case, we have the provincial, we also adopt this guideline, ah, in the provincial meet. The participants in the Palarong Pambansa shall be elementary and secondary athletes from public and private schools who participated in the division meet, school, district, and other applicable meets and regional meet, provided that secondary athletes shall refer to both junior and senior high school learners. Generally, kinder to grade six athletes shall play in the elementary division, and grade seven to grade twelve athletes shall play in the secondary division. However, an elementary athlete who has been declared over age at the elementary level may be allowed to play at the secondary level. Alright. Ah, there is a ruling here about, okay, eligibility of athletes. A Filipino citizen enrolled in public and private recognized schools, and then, ah, in case, section six, ah, paragraph C, in case of transfer of learner athlete, the following rules shall apply. For transfer athlete from one region to another region, a one academic year or school year residency requirement shall be imposed only upon secondary student athletes, except for grade, ah, for those in grade seven and grade eleven. Transferies in the elementary level shall be allowed to play, provided his or transfer was made before at the beginning of the school year. This is for, ah, region to region, transfer of athlete from region to another region. So, a one-year residency is allowed. Now, for individual event, which, ah, the Dance Sport is in, transferies from one school to another school within the division, or transferies from one division to another division within the same region are allowed to participate. In, in this case, since this is, ah, what you call is DEEPED Order in the Palarong Pambansa, provided they participated in the lower meets. So, these guidelines were also adopted by us when we have our divisional meet, ah, division meet or city meet. So, our guideline that, ah, we adopt in the division meet is, the child has participated in the lower meets, school or district disregarding whether that child is coming from our division or a transferie from other division, because the guideline states that from one division to another division was in the same region.
Okay, sir, I heard you. Allow na siya basta, ang, ang transferie was able to participate in lower meets. And I heard nga, humana ang August 8 iyong competition, nawala ka participet ang Tengaimenez, to this allowed. Wala sa ma-appeal sa competition sa August 8? Can you clarify, sir?
Okay. Ah, in all honesty and in good face, ah, Mr. Chair, I responded affirmatively whether the child can participate in the division meet, because again, in DEEPED Order 20 Series 2024, it says that the child has participated in the lower meets. So, the child has participated in the school meet and district meet. So, the DEEPED guideline is silent whether the it's from the division or another division.
Can you define lower meets? What, what you mean by lower?
Ah, lower meets is school meet and district meet. So, in this regard, the transferie is coming from Jimenez, and the child has participated in the school and district meet in their division.
So, what I heard, sir, nga, na-humana ang school meet atong August 8? So, wala ka appeal ang Jimenez?
Wala ka appeal, ah, Mr. Chair, pero naasay school meet o lower, ah, district meet in another division. So, nga toang sa DEEPED guidelines, ah, DEEPED Order 20 Series 24, ah, nag-ingon naman dito nga, the child has participated in the lower meets.
Sir, is a matter of interpretation of your guidelines, no? Ang pasabot sa guidelines tingali, to my mind, nga, allowed siya kunap-sipet sa lower meets, meaning sa school contest sa sinaschool. Kay, is unfair nga, humana contest, naitekalay luka sa Jimenez, abot, humana, na-appeal siya, nawala man sa contest. Nalo siya man magkustan, nawala man sa contest. That's the idea, sir. I know, I don't know, ah, or Luciso?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On that note, on that premise, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask again to confirm, ah, Sir Maraliano, regarding, katong taga-Jimenez, naka-appil na siyang district meet sa iyahang kaugalingon sa Jimenez. And then, ah, last week, ah, regardless, naka-appil siyang nakadaw last week, nimbahin siya din he, to represent our district, iyahang district, which is OCCS, for the city meet. Muna ako naibawad. Okay. I'd like to read a Palarong Pambansa guidelines, Mr. Chair, if it's okay, if I may proceed? Thank you. The rule on multiple representation. An athlete may only represent one school, one division, and one region in a given school year. Once an athlete has already competed in the division meet of one division, that athlete is no longer eligible to compete for another division if they transfer after that. In other words, if they already played in division meet, which is in Jimenez, they cannot later transfer and join division meet B. That is under the rule on multiple representation on Palarong Pambansa eligibility guidelines, Mr. Chair, to clarify.
Morag, klaro nang ibasa ni Luciso, sir. Maslaro, kunka, appeal na ka sa usaka, contest, lain lugar, dina-kapid ka pa is lain lugar. Morag nae, indrik benisong kay, humana man, Semenis, appeal na siya, ingute sa sa karen, astol ba, on zampe, pili siya, kro appeal na po sa Usamis, morag nae, samping pisis eh, morag nae. So, delay allowed, sa agi-ingone, oh, Luciso, can you respond, sir? Can you respond to that?
Ah, thank you so much, Honorable Roland Luciso. Ah, I think, ah, what has been read by Honorable Roland Luciso is the new guidelines for the Palarong Pambansa. The, that's the new guidelines. So, ah, pag-unas siya karun, ah, actually, it was, it was discussed last, ah, times ah, let me recall. No, no, September, katong nato sila ni Ma'am Lato. Ah, last week, yeah, so recall this, sir. Last week of September, there was a gathering of the, ah, DISAC. Our DISAC is the, ah, Division Screening and Accreditation Committee. So, ah, our representative is, ah, Ma'am Lato, and then, ah, those new guidelines are being discussed there. So, ah, ah, what you call this, si Ma'am Lato will still cascade that information to us, kay pag-unas siya nga guideline. And that guideline, I think, will, ah, be implemented in the Palarong Pambansa 2026.
Yes, sir, but there is no, can you give me reason, nga, can a new guidelines, it is not apply now, sa atong ciudad sa Usamis? Is, can you give me a reason, nga, one na ma-apply nga guidelines, new guidelines? Hello? Sir, Libagun, please?
Hello, hello, Mr. Chair, good afternoon once again. Ah, in the context of Palarong Pambansa, there are guidelines that will be issued on this year, which is expected to be implemented next year. So, while the, while we give recognition to the recently issued Palarong Pambansa guidelines, ah, it is expected to be fully implemented on the 2026 Palarong Pambansa.
Next year, next year, pa?
Oh, so, ah, we really recognize that guidelines or those guidelines, but then, we have these guidelines also, but to go back to the issue, ah, because we, we really need to hit the issue. Wala na to gi, gi, gireject ang bata nga taga Mulikay. Ang, ang concern tingali sa coach o sa school is, wala pod, no, wala man na, unaware man si principal nga, na another is that intention of transferring later on to, to represent, no? Sa parts, ah, sa teacher and sa coach, ah, imagine na pod si ma'am nga, pwidi man day duha, oh, pero wala gyud. Let it be established in the records and to everyone attending, ah, there is no prejudicial rejection on the part of, on the part of the learner. Gi dungagan o contestant ang OCCS. Wala gi salikway, sorry for the term, wala gi salikway ang contestant nga taga Mulikay. The other thing lang is, we were discussing, ah, oh, so, we were not informed also in the division office nga, kunta, katong bata nga, atong i-accommodate man kaha, dito na siya sa standard category. Kay, we cannot also, we cannot also deny nga, morag masakitang pod ang parts sa, sa parent, sa grandparent, o sa bata. Kay, di are, ilang akong giunahon na nga, gi taparan sila, or ilang, ang ilahang pagdawat, morag kuwan sila kanang alistan. Pero actually, Mr. Division Sports Officer, wala mang gyud sila gi alistan, nahimong duha ang contestant sa OCCS. Pero of course, with the guidance of the SDS, she ruled out last night, yesterday, that it will be, the contest will not be pursued, to iron out this concern, to, to arrive at a very favorable win-win solution on the various sides. Thank you po, Honorable Chair.
Sir, explain nao nga, wala re-diksyon?
Oh, yes, sir, from the very start, wala re-diksyon, sir.
So, ang chair is wondering why, I received information nga, ang mama nga nasulat, nag-ilak, pila, wakatulog, sa hito po si anak, nga ang bata pod, emotionally bothered, loo ang bata. Ah, is it to, information I received? So, dakunig impact sa bata o sa inahan? So, I don't know how this communication from the sports committee of DEEPED, ipaabot to sa kanya nga, di manama, wala magireject, wala magideny. Kamu, ano wala abot, ano hilak ang inahan, ang bata anong goal kayo? Si practice siya, modern na hito po. I don't know what happened. So, can you explain, ah, sir, Marian, Mariano, please?
Ah, thank you, Mr. Chair. During our initial talk with Honorable Calahat and the, ah, the parent of the child, pag ato niya dito sa office, napakuwanan namo nga, ah, wala gi rejection nga may tabo, actually, wala rejection, wala ikuwan nga may tabo, no, salikway nga may tabo, only that, naalantay gi dungagan, kay, actually, ang events sa Dance Sport is two couples na siya. Gi dungagan na to, ang bata, ang kuwan lang ato is, ah, musayaw siya sa the same category nga naa ang kuwan, naa ang katong, ah, taga OCCS nga kuwan, no? So, morag mag, ah, ang kuwan lang ani is ang, we admit nga kulang o papasabot siguro sa ato ang kuwan, na pagpasabot lang ba, pagsabot, pagsabot sabot, not pagsasabot nga, nga kuwan, no? Ang ato lang instruction nga dapat kunanay standard, ah, unanay Latin, ato sa standard, kinaanamatay Latin nga na-declare, which is ang katong kang kuwan kang Honorable, ah, Calahat nga apo.
Okay, the chair would like to believe that there is only communication gap, no? Ah, I would like to believe that, to, Luciso, please, your friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ah, since this is a competition, kay, ako, I'm always a fan of, kanay, ah, salsa, Latin dances, I was there in Tango cheering from morning until the midnight, kay, kabalo ko sa struggle sa anyong mga bataa, ah, naagi sa ka mga judges nga ipabalik-balik na sila sa yo, hangtun, ma-determine siya gear first, second, and third. Ah, actually, I also talked with Mr. Edong, Filipino of the province, na-ingon siya nga isaragyo ang mapadala, mubitang, nakabantay ko katong ng provincial meeta, nga gi, before i-compete si provincial, the compete pa ang cluster sa Miss Oak, kay isara na gina-ipadala mo, nang naaplan tag two days, three days, ato, no? Kanyang pagpadala na to, sasaka, kaduha ka-kapal, until city meet reguni, pero ni gabo sa province, isaragyon. Kanyang ingon gi, confirm na ko si sir Edong, sa province na ko, I just called him up, nga isaragyo ang diwa ton, from Usamis City. So, with, with that, ah, the coach itself, ako ang pangutangan ni coach, Ma'am Jean, canang regarding sato ang practices, ay no nga, na naggyke idea nga duha ipadala, pero delay siguro maabot sa out bus of obfuscation, of passion, o kasukos, atong size sa bata, di siguro maabot, delay nga part, kung napasabot na nila nga, duha mapadala, ma'am, delay, o delay pwidi isa. Ma'am, la, siguro tay, kuwan gamay nga, tawag ani, sh, kanabit nao ang mistake, dito sa pit sa coaching, kay, ano mo out, ano magyau-yau man sila, masukok man sila nga duha, pwidi man duha.
Okay, Luciso, sa guidelines, atong, sa guidelines, pilaging mapadala, usa duha.
Okay. Ah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ah, Sir Mariano, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, ang sa provincial meet na to, Mr. Chair, duha gyud ang ipadala, two couples, division sa city na to, ang ato ang delegation sa Usamis, ah, delegation, sa duha gyud na tumapadala, usa sa category A, o usa sa category E, pero ang dalunana for NM Raa is usa ka-kapal ra gyud katong category A.
Sa district meet, sa sinaschool, na maindaw na sa August 8, niya maabot ng taga Jimenez, maduha na? So, duha may banla? Sa city meet?
Yes, duha na ato ang.
Meaning, ang, ang city school?
Per category.
Sinaschool, duha ang kustan? Sinaschool? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
So, duha na?
Duha.
Ah, just, sinaschool lang?
Per district. District, ah, district, ah, district to man. Kay, division meet is district ato ang kuwan, so per district, ah, per guidelines sa Palaro is duha gyud atong ipadala, duha ka-kapals. It's so happen nga, ang central is na-usa, nga dayon here comes, na-transporter, may mong duha sila, so, okay na ta, and then, mukadaw ang, say for example, mudaog ang OCCS, silang duha, for example lang, okay? So, ma, kadawag ang OCCS, sa division meet, so silang duha ipadala sa provincial meet. Okay, so from provincial meet, category A and category E. So, ang kuwan for NM Raa, is uso na lang ka-kapal for category A. Pero ang A, champion gold na pod to sila, pero per guidelines sa Dance Sport, ang A atong ipadala for NM Raa?
Uso ng category, sir, ang, kanang sa Calahat, kapal, o sa category, ma'am? Category A pod?
Category A siya mabutang, Your Honor.
Katong sa Jimenez?
Katong Jimenez, if allowed, ato siya sa E. But then, in the.
Ega pod?
E, E.
Ay, E.
A and E.
A as in, as in apple, A as in egg?
Ah, ah, and then, sa. Sa division meet, manggud, Your Honor, canang, ah, we allow more than, even more than two couples for every district. In fact, ang Maximino, they have four couples to compete in the division, four couples for Latin, and OCCS has only one, ma ad-uning isa, to make it two, but ang other is four good sila.
Okay, ma'am, I get, I get, ako nalibugan, nanong human na August 8? Humana man, competition, nga naman na may lain ma-appeal pa? Humana man?
Ah, maulag ito, si sir, mo'y mutubagan na katong guideline nga.
So, pwidi na ay mo mag-competition August 8, pwidi man lain, lain time, nga competition pod? Humana man?
Division na sila, automatic na sila, nga dito na sila mag-compete sa division level along with the other districts.
May, ma'am, nga naman nga, humana man ang competition, August 8? Na na may lain ma-appeal nga, wap, wapis competition? Na iun si, si Sir Mariano nga, he should compete at the lower levels, meaning, na appeal sa competition sa sinaschool, wala mag-appeal, dito man Semenis na appeal competition during levels. So, muna akong point of, ah, please clarify, ma'am, please, ah, educate me?
Ah, Mr. Chair, good afternoon once again. Ang, again, in all honesty, ah, Mr. Chair, and in good face, I am relying on DEEPED 20 Series 2024 guidelines on the Palarong Pambansa, which is also adopted in the lower meets. Nag-ingon naman ko dito pod ang guidelines na to, ang atong i-adapt na to sa division meet, is, ang bata naka-appil o lower meets, which is the school meet and.
I will stop you, sir, ang lower level, meaning, abo sabot, lower level, meaning na-appeal sa sinaschool nga competition. Ah, ano ang level dito man si Jimenez?
Ah, thank, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Ang guidelines pod, Mr. Chair, is silence siya whether ang school meet ba, naaba sa the same division or different division. Wala mapod magingun pod ang ato ang DEEPED guidelines nga dapat, ang lower meet, kung asa ka na bilong dito, na dugo kang ang lower meet.
We have a legal, ah, here from DEEPED, ah, legal, what is your call, ma'am? Your, ah, legal innovation eh? Ato na intipet ka, provided, ang, this na nakapatisipet sa lower meets, meaning, na appeal sa contest ba sa lower meets? Ang lower meets appeal na dito man si Jimenez, dito man sa Usamis? Ma'am, you have, please?
Hello, hello, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and to the honorable body. Um, the interpretation of Sir Mariano on the DEEPED guidelines is that, um, because it just mentioned that the, the athlete participated in lower meets, so it did not specifically state that it participated in the lower meet or in the, ano specific, lower meet. So, we understand, Your Honor, that this is somewhat a gray area, because this is subject to different interpretations. I concur to your interpretation as well, but we also have our interpretation from the, um, sports coordinator and even from the region, because in all honesty, Sir Mariano consulted the regional sports coordinator about the issue, and that his response was in affirmative, that for individual. that for individual events, for as long as the participant has, uh, was able to join or participate in lower meets, not specifically kung asa nga school, gyud, or sa nga district, pwederas siya. So relying on that and, uh, Sir Mariano's interpretation of the guidelines, um, muto nihatag siya sa iyahang go signal. And I would just like to add, your honor, siguro to address that gray area. Munang sa gi-basa ni Honorable Swiko, naanan na siya nga, um, murag guideline, gi-specify na gyud, nga once, um, you are, you come from a different school or district, you cannot transfer and compete in the, in another division or, uh, division or district meet for the purpose lang ang mahakompete ka sa both. So, yes, your honor.
Thank you, Mam. You know, nag-iinterpretation nga, nga area, no? Kay, I've been lawyer for more than thirty-five years. I've been practice for more than thirty-five years. No, iti five ko na buwad, ako na patler for, I practice court. Dugan kayo, so, kamang, may tipis court imam, sa'yo, maabuwan na maglaris, bro. La, lai interpretation, no? Pro mura mura, pro lai interpretation. I prefer tipis sa based on common sense, nga mag, mag, competition mo sa lower meet to choose the winner. Can I winner? Kuya, dito po na, dito po na winner, po? My interpretation is common sense, nga, kunam transfer, nakapil sa lower meets, sa sinaschool competition, munam sa bot, common sense, common sense, Mam. As lawyer for more than thirty-five years. So, I'm sorry, but that's my interpretation. Kunat, Tagahimenes ikan, nakupet si Jimenez, tapidig ka sa Claren, kay, in daw ka, tapidig sa Claren, di na, wala ka apil sa Osamis City competition, di ko qualified. So, I, I'm sorry, but that's my only interpretation, common sense lang, common sense.
Yes, your honor.
Anyway, you said that's a gray area, so, okay. So, we, we hear from you, another, Mam, we hear from Honorable Co, please, Honorable Co.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to ask and inquire, sa karun nga city meet, pila kabook, um, couples ang mo, mo compete? For the city meet, pila ka entries or pila ka couples sa, mo compete sa Latin and standard? Dahil duha ka category ang ilahang i-compete, no? The A and the E. So, muinguntad, Latin, napanasya duha ka category, subcategory A and E? Dahil sa standard, napu A and E? So karun, uh, schedule naman ato ang city meet, no, for three days? Pila di ay kabook couples nga mo compete sa total, uh, sa tanan districts, sa the whole division?
Uh, the, the, the last, the last info that I got from our tournament manager and the, uh, tournament director, as of now, nag-meeting pa sila to decide on this. Kay, karun pa Manggo, ni, nahitabuk Mam nga, ni, ni ani. Kay, usually, in the previous, tag duha na lagi, tag sa, ano, camera, sa kuwan, karun pa ni tabuk nga, na ay daghang competing couple in one school, katong sa Maximino, four couples gyud sila. So the last na kun na, nahibalan is mo mag, mag-compete na po ang.
Okay, na ba isto, ready, komo si official?
Sige, Mam, please.
Kanang, sa last, na sa GC na mo, sa amo ang committee sa kuwan dance sport is katong four couples sa Maximino, ipakumpet na po sila balik district level and then isa na lang ang ipa-kuwan, ano ang ilahang?
Uh, yes, uh, that would be my, supposed to be my second question. And how are you going to deal with the Laurete, uh, Maximino Laurete schools who has four, um, couples, uh, contestant? So, presuming na nahumana naman ta sa district, uh, meet. So supposedly, duha ra dyan unta ni ang mo gawas to compete for the city meet. So that is why I am asking, oh, pila magdi-ditanan ka couples ang, uh, mo, mo buy for the, uh, dance sports, uh, contest? Presuming nga wala ta nag-meeting karun, uh, and ang katong transferi couple, apil na basad siya nga mo compete unta for the city meet?
Can you respond, Mam, to that?
Uh, if this did not happen, ang mahitabo gyud, your honor, if na dahil tomorrow is four Latin couples for Maximino, one for Kapukao, and two for OCCS. Ano dyan unta, in all honesty, ang mahitabo tomorrow?
Honorable Co, you have, Palopisyon?
Yes, yes, uh, Mr. Chair.
And then, Uciso, next?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, nalibug lang ko, Mr. Chair, kay, nahumana na mag-compete ang Laurete, dahil the four couples will still and can still compete at the city level. So, uh, with this, ingun ani ang system, so all schools can always accommodate transfers, no? Even if there are already two couples, presuming nga nanatay duha ka couples nga, naka, nakadaog na sa district level or sa school level nga duha. So, kung i-accommodates ang Laurete for couples, all couples, so other districts or other schools can still welcome uh, new couples to compete for the city meet.